Keep apples.
Yeah.
There's a stump there and we do find the little greens leftovers of strawberries.
We got five little baby.
Sitting there eating them.
Okay. Okay, so time to, let's see, what time is it? Six thirty-five, time to call the meeting for the Conservation Commission to order. It's Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. We're in City Hall, room two fifteen on one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Present is Karen Spitz, Jeremy Spitz, George Craig in person, Dan McGinnis on teams, myself, Christine Altman and staff member Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner. Okay, so minutes for approval, may do the, what day was it? January, remember what day in January?
Twenty-fifth, oh.
No, we have two, yeah, we have two that we need to do.
Oh, there it is, twenty-eighth.
Okay, the January twenty-eighth.
That was me, sorry, it's been a long day.
January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
Do we have the minutes?
Do we have them right here?
Do we do them or?
I did them.
But we didn't circulate them, right? Because we didn't send it to the?
Well, it was on the, it's on the, oh, you have, no, that's the, is that the January? Okay, so I guess we will have to wait, we'll have to table the minutes. And if you all would read, or is that not even anything that we need to worry about?
We don't have to adopt the February minutes. I think, was that just Karen?
It was just me and Karen, we didn't have form.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
We'll just have to make sure it gets on next month's agenda.
New business, nothing, old business, applicant Galen Sempervin, East West Engineering for fifty-three McDermott Avenue. We haven't received anything from them, so that one gets tabled to the next meeting.
Yeah, they're the ones that were trying to figure out their conservation set aside for the subdivision, but they're in kind of appraisal limbo right now, waiting to, because they have to get an assessment essentially of how the value of the property so that they can do a fee in lieu and mix that with conservation easement, right?
Because they need to get some information before they can present anything to us, all right? So the next thing is Earth Day cleanup planning event.
Right, so that day is, we have the date scheduled, it is April nineteenth, right? April nineteenth. I've gone through, we've done, I released the, the press release, I guess it was in the paper, I don't know who picked it up, maybe Republican, American, but ZBG, I just did an interview with them this morning, which he hadn't, he didn't call last year, so that's kind of, it's good to get that out that way. We're gonna have it on the mayor's Facebook page, the Economic Development, I don't know how many people actually go to that, and then we're gonna post it downstairs, do we post it? In the box down at the, like by the tax office, yeah, where the clerk posts stuff.
We can, I, I have it, but we can't.
Yeah, because I feel like that's good, it's right by the entrance, so. There is, we always go back and forth, I mean, I've gone back and forth on other projects with that, just because it gets kind of rowdy, you can get negative, but, yeah.
So there's the T-Town, Torrington Chatter, you know, Torrington, Connecticut, and there's, you know, Torrington Talks and, and that. I always thought that if we had better social media presence, that we would get people, but we do not. We've been posting on social media for years and having, watching our numbers go.
I've been posting too on that, that nice flyer that you have.
Yeah.
I know we got some, I think some people coming from the Democratic Town Committee.
Okay.
That'll, that'll come, but not getting a lot of response on it.
I did, I did, Pat, the, the mayor's sending someone from, I don't know if it's young Republicans or if it's just another group through them that they're sending, yeah, but. A group.
Okay, good.
And I invited the mayor too, but she, it's not to me, so, I don't know, hopefully we see her. But yeah, so just getting the word out that way, I don't know if there's any other avenues.
Through all of the, I went through all of our signups from the beginning that I had and.
From the, when you say the beginning, you mean like twenty, like twenty years of them, yeah, yeah.
I was thinking, I was like, what's the likelihood that people's emails will be the same? And then I thought about mine and I was like, pretty likely. I mean, I have more than one now, but they're all still working. So I, I made an email list of, of, and then other organizations that I, that, you know, I was kind of brainstorming, other ones who have done it in the past. So I have an email list that email blast will go out tomorrow. And then I thought we could mail to.
Stamp look familiar?
Yeah.
At least we can get the event stamp going.
We can stuff these if we want, but I did, like, there's, I'm trying to remember what, there's civic organizations, churches, karate studios, dance studios, the grocery stores.
Because part of them were soliciting donations for like prize, like gift cards and stuff like that, right?
So well, what I, what I did was I was looking through all of the files for the last twenty years and like one year Big Y had a team, and I guess that they are looking for civic, you know, they, what they said in that letter to Kim was, you know, we're often looking for things, you know, community service things, I don't think they get ours, they just like have groups within the, within the employment that, that does that, yeah. So I just thought that if that was the case, then that's a place to send the, this thing, so. There's just a letter, the Conservation Commission is pleased to announce the twentieth anniversary of our Earth Day Cleanup, this year's event will be held on Saturday, April nineteenth, at Copark, one-on-one Litchfield Street, from nine AM until noon. Volunteers are needed, we provide food, water and supplies, you supply your time and desire to make Torrington beautiful. We are encouraging our residents, business leaders and civic organizations to form groups and call Nate Nardi Cyrus to select a location in advance, however, we always register individuals and groups in person at the event as well. We have marked over eighty littered locations throughout the city and are hoping that with your help, we can make this the most successful cleanup yet. This event qualifies for community service hours, since Earth Day is occurring close to Easter, we are celebrating by scattering prize-filled eggs. There will also be prizes for the most trash collected, best trash collecting outfit, funniest, most unusual find. Give our offices a call by April eleventh, twenty twenty-five to donate towards this festivity. If nothing else, would you please post our flyer prominently and spread the word? So then there's the flyer and I, the explainer, what happens at Earth Day and all of the, of the history of the event. Would you want to look at that?
Yeah, I do.
Even if this just scrapes up a few more, it should be, we were kind of having some pretty dismal turnout in the past few years.
But last year it was good.
Last year was better, yeah, definitely.
Oh, wow, I made it.
That was the, the.
That's why we use Steve's truck, I mean, we, we got mattresses, we got, oh man, we got a ton of crazy stuff, wow.
So I think so, so does, I mean, I think that was a pretty good push if we just kind of continue to post.
So then I have these for us, this is a letter signed by me, I'm the City of Torrington letterhead, because I, it's, I think it's best to go in person and go to the customer service desk and solicit donation for, like from BJ's and from, so what we will get from that are a bunch of gift cards.
Okay.
Like, I don't know, they give you twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, so.
We're asking for gift cards specifically?
That's what they give, that's what the corporate, that's what corporate gives, so like, you know.
One, one year I went to, I think Lowe's and they gave us garbage bags.
Right, but what, when they specifically, because last time I went to Lowe's, they gave me a gift card and I could buy garbage bags, but they actually gave you garbage bags? Maybe, I mean, it, maybe it depends on the management, but I know you can, I mean, we at the very least could ask for gift cards, I mean, that's the easiest thing for them to do for you.
Then we can offer those as, as prizes, yeah. So I have letters for everybody and we should divvy up where we, where we go.
Well, can I have this stuff?
Sure, here, this one's yours.
That's all set up, right?
So where are the types of businesses? And I can do one too, or a couple, I mean. So we would be giving them away as prizes. For, so, and that's part of like, right, are we gonna, the question is like, what are the categories that we're gonna give prizes for? And we have to like, make it a point when we register people to tell them to, because a lot of it, right, they don't come back. Yeah, maybe take a picture of it.
So like, if, if we go to business and say, we donate, will they get advertisement?
Yeah, we get some recognition as well.
Besides the one person, like that one person that, let's say I go to Lowe's, gets a Lowe's gift card.
Right.
Will that, only the winner of that get it, or will there be like a list of people that have donated someone?
Sometimes we have, we have to have sponsors, sometimes we have not. You know, so like for years, Torrington Maintenance Supply was supplying all of our bags, gloves, everything, they never had any kind of, was just something that Tom Tomlin did, and then it was Doyle's Medical, and I don't think that we've, have we ever given Doyle's? I don't think we've ever given.
Well, it's hard to have like a shout, I mean, unless we had like a banner with all of them on it, which is possible, I guess, I, it's hard, we would have to make that ourselves, we could do that. Other than that, you know, they don't require anything of us, they just say, what's it gonna go toward, I'm sure they filled out some paperwork for themselves as far as, because they have to give away a certain amount of money every quarter or, or year or whatever, so. Because we did that to fund before, we can talk about this, but we got money from the NIPS due to buy lunch. I tried like doing just Stop and Shop and like running around and just getting all of our stuff through gift cards, it was such a pain, but like they did. Right.
Well, I was thinking, like there's a new local business that opened up, Micro Greens.
Right.
So. Sure that person would want.
If they get some publicity?
It'll be.
Right.
Well, we can't give some publicity and not to others, so.
Well, that's why I'm not asking for it.
Yeah, yeah, so if we're gonna give publicity, then it has to be to everybody who, who donates.
We could do a board and like print out a bunch of like the logos of everyone, right, and put that up.
Whatever business, it doesn't have to be a local business, if they know they're gonna.
Right.
The corporate places don't, I don't.
They don't care anyway, but the small ones.
But probably the small ones.
It'd be kind of nice to have like Cafe Soul on there too.
It would be beneficial to help our local business rather than large business, I know most people would probably rather get a large business, easier to use.
Right. Would you be willing to do that on a, like, just a, like a publish, even just a publisher document, just drag a bunch of logos in and format it to, because we could probably plot, get that, as long as we're just asking them to print on the plotter, not format it.
The only issue is with size, when you print larger.
Right. Right.
You need a monitor. You need, a monitor is seventy-two DPI, so if it, if it shows as one inch monitor, you only need seventy-two pixels across.
Right.
But for print, you need three hundred, so when you print something, it always looks blurry, so you'd have to be able to get high-res.
Well, then with that, was the other thing, is that you're not gonna be grabbing them, you know, their logos, they need to be sent away.
They'd have to send it, yeah, I mean, if I went to Lowe's website, I mean, I guess if it's a vector image, but if it's just like a picture.
Yeah. But the small businesses will be hard, at the very least. Well, with our, yeah, I would.
I think it'd be just a list in the flyers, like, like, are we gonna have a flyer or pamphlet or something?
We never have a pamphlet that we hand out there.
We don't hand out there, we could always have the, the list of the names.
Yeah, I mean, that we could do, we could do that, have a list, a list of, don't, you know, people who donated.
We don't have one of those like plastic prop things, right? That's like the perfect tool for that.
I have, I have one. We can follow up afterward on the, like, the city's website and just say.
Thanking these, these donors.
Thank you for.
Or on the mayor's post, we could have that.
Yeah, we could do that.
Maybe on the mayor's post.
That's actually, that's probably gonna get more eyeballs then, because my other thought would be, right, I was thinking tape it to the thing, but it's such a, you know, bleep show and that's a good idea, doing like a, a follow-up mayor's post too.
Well, I'm just thinking, didn't we have, I'm trying to think of his name now, the photographer, and of course, you know, we're very Republican, we sold, it's a Hertz company now, but didn't we have, who was the gentleman with the glasses?
He came to the, to the one at Red Mountain Trail, right?
I wonder if we could, should, if we invite him and we do have a poster in front of our table, get a picture, we get it into the newspaper, you know, and then we could get to the people that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know.
I feel like they don't always show up.
No, they don't.
What is his name?
I know, I was, I was surprised, because I'm used to seeing the reporters and not actually the photographer. But at the very least, I think the mayor's, the mayor's page may get the most amount of eyeballs. And it's kind of cool to show all of the different, it kind of like shows the size of the event, you know, if it's like Dunkin' Donuts, I mean.
Right.
There's, there's gonna be a lot, but yeah.
So I was thinking Big Y, Market Thirty-two. I don't know whether the littler guys, like Aldi's and Price Right would do that, but no harm in asking, Stop and Shop. We could do Lowe's, we could do Home Depot.
Are we, are we giving this to the place?
We don't give it to, well, they can make a copy. Or you can make copies of it, or I can make more copies, but generally.
I think they usually just take it.
They usually just take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that means we can only go to one place.
Well, I have to make you more copies, I can make copies before we leave.
Well, I guess they'll only take it if they say yes, so I was thinking.
They usually say, it's not like the.
It's surprisingly easy.
Super easy.
Like, they don't get as much, they don't get that many requests, I get the feeling, people have forgotten that they can do this.
Well, I. I can go, I'll be either at, well, I'll definitely be at Big Y, I'll also be at Lowe's at some point, and I can stop at the Micro Greens, please.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so take three of them, all right, can we just?
Do an inventory of a.
Yeah, who's doing one, I think I forgot. Okay, so you'll do Market Thirty-two?
I'll take anything else, what about, what about, do you think Harbor Freight would?
Oh, why not?
People love Harbor Freight.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna ask him anymore.
So Harbor Freight. And then if you're at Harbor Freight, you might as well see if Price Right.
Well, and Ocean State Job Lot.
Oh, yeah.
They probably will.
Yep. Harbor Freight, Price Right, Ocean State.
You have BJ's already on there?
I can do BJ's, put me down for BJ's.
I'm doing.
So we need Stop and Shop and Aldi's. I can do the Aldi's. There's never any, you know, there's like our customer service.
What about Walmart?
Oh, yeah, we should totally do Walmart, what about Target?
I'll lose something, that's a one.
What do you target?
I'm trying to think what's on your side of town.
Where are you, yeah, where are you?
He's, he's on.
On the west end.
Yeah. That's honestly probably those, if you wanted to do the Harbor Freight.
Wonder if Sonic has, are they too little?
No, they're corporate. People like Sonic. If you, or if you wanted to do Harbor Freight, Ocean State and Price Right, that's just that one plaza, you can just go. But I can pick up. I may be out of for myself, oh no, I got one more.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
Plaza, okay. Walmart, Stop and Shop, Market Thirty-two.
What, is it Market Thirty-two, what, what's the supermarket?
Oh, that's Price Right.
Oh, that's Price Right.
You're gonna do Stop and Shop, Walmart and Market Thirty-two.
Okay, so we need a Home Depot.
I can do Big Y and Lowe's.
Okay.
Oh, that's, you're, you're doing that, okay.
You wanna do Home Depot?
I can do Home Depot, they're not even in Torrington, so. But we've done them before, so, Home Depot. Okay. Great, yeah, that should be, and then, so if they all give twenty-five dollars, we could, you know, bundle them or not, I don't.
For a certain amount, just let them know what they're gonna get.
Sometimes they get busy, sometimes they not.
Yeah.
How do we present it, like?
You can say it'll be as a.
We have a volunteer, we need help with some feeding our volunteer group, that's what I always say. So we have a bunch of volunteers who clean up Torrington, including the areas, you know, around your parking lots and, you know, stuff like that, and that we need to have donations to help feed them.
Oh, no, I would just, I would just say, I would just say it's a prize, I don't think it's, I don't think they're gonna care either way, because it's gonna be ultimately. Because I feel like that's the biggest, like with like auctions and like any of those fundraiser stuff, right? It's always like donating.
Right.
Well, we, we may, we may, we may use them for that.
Yeah, so, yeah, how are we doing for supply?
I have to do the inventory on it, but I'll, I think we're fine for this event.
Ying-yang, right?
We have plenty of gloves, I think we're fine on bags, I'll, I'll have to. We have all those.
And has it been, has Doyle's been supplying those lately?
What, the gloves?
Yeah, all that stuff.
Yeah, they've done, they did gloves for us.
And then Lowe's.
Bags we were getting from Lowe's. But yeah, we're good on that now, but I'll, I'll, I think, but I'll, I'll double check. When are we gonna, when should I have all that stuff in? Because we don't have a meeting between.
Right, I think that we should just do it as soon as possible and.
Do we just share online, like on the, what we get and what's kind of plan, plan for it? Yeah, just through the email chain, because then, once we get there, everyone's gonna come in and then there's all this downtime, we can kind of like, I mean, I don't know, what do you, do you think that's enough time to like, doesn't have to be flashy, right? We just give them the gift card and, right, or the.
Big Eggs, I bought them.
Oh, you have big eggs for the, well, that's the question too, do, what, what's gonna be a prize for like most trash or verse having?
What we want to do is figure out what we get.
Right.
So I would think gift cards, right, the eggs are for, for kids, and so I would, you know, the locate, we have to determine the locations where we're gonna put them and.
But so would the eggs have candy in them or something like that? And then.
I was thinking of donating some cash and having some cash in there, and then, I don't know, we should do some candy, I mean, that seems kind of odd, why would you want to eat candy when you're picking up trash?
If you're a kid, you know, but yeah, but there's not that, I don't know, because we're gonna put the eggs in the trash.
Yeah, so I mean, the question is, is do we.
So why don't we bribe the kids, they, they.
Totally want to bribe the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have to have ten pieces of trash to get an egg, how about like the.
Well, that's true, we could do it that way.
First, like the first fill a bag.
So that would mean like. Well, so we have to find, good, good friendly locations that are full of a lot of trash. You know, and then somebody'd have to be there to kind of officiate at that location.
I feel like that's getting to be a law with like, and, and what if like we put them in a place and like they don't get picked up and then it's just.
We have to know where, where they are, we could just do it at Coach Park. That's a good news story, but remember, no publicity is bad publicity.
My, my thought on this, at least for this year, would maybe be just do the prizes back at the ranch, and then encourage people to come back and like, put them in the big eggs and we can give them out. That we could do something like that, but this, this is the logistic thing we have to get around, because right now the way it works is that everyone comes in, we give everyone like three bags, their gloves, a location to go, and then they go and seventy-five percent of the people pull, like text and say, my bags are there, I'm going home. And that's part of the service that we, right, we pick it up and bring back.
Take their bags home, there are some people who put their, the bags in their own trash.
So how we would have to do this would be maybe, maybe just like a camera thing, like where they just take a picture of, like if we do a prize for like most unusual item, have them take a picture and send it to us.
They're gonna be bagged, you don't want people bringing them.
Right, bagged or they're at the site and like, we're still picking up, like, we have to know.
Something I'll have to make, want to figure that out, and I'll have to make a little set of instructions for how you enter.
Right, and something as simple as possible, so I can get, make sure that people like can do it and email.
Yep, or text.
That's why I think we should keep it, rather than having like the Easter egg component too, make it just, just make it like the prizes for, and we just have to figure out categories though, like, how would we calculate volume?
Oh.
If we do the most trash, like.
Most trash, I thought it was like, like a best outfit. Wasn't that one of them?
But we did, but we, I don't know if we.
Now I gotta do a new mailer, because I already put it in from the last meeting.
That it was the best outfit.
Then there was like best outfit, most trash, funniest item.
Okay. Well, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, I'll just wear silly hat, maybe I'll win, you know.
Oh, my daughter was like, I can do that.
Perfect, as long as someone dresses up, I think that's all that really matters. But yeah, no, I'm, so wait, so we said like what, silliest outfit?
Or best, best, best cleanup, best cleanup outfit.
Okay, and then something like the most.
Mailing would give cards then, like if they just take a picture.
That's.
Or put it in their own trash and.
Yeah, but I, I mean, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be.
I think we want to encourage them to come back too, because, but then, yeah, we wouldn't want to.
Assuming they come back with the trash or come back and share the picture, then.
Right.
Or they're there and then, oh, or whatever.
Most people don't come back with the trash unless they're the person who's doing the walkable, like in the downtown area.
Right, but that's a good point, so, so maybe we could, maybe they could give their address or something like that too, as a, as an option.
I mean, if we have that as a sign-in, sign-up sheet.
Some people aren't gonna care and they're just gonna go and do it and it'll be fine, but it'd be nice to be able to give some out to people.
Gift cards, they can come back.
I think so. Right, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And you can text them and tell them, say, you know, you either pick it up at the town hall or we can mail it to you.
That's true, we could say they could pick it up and then they could show us the picture or something like that, and that, that's, that's probably easy enough, if they don't want to come back or if they can't.
They want to come back, they got, I mean, they have to send the picture to us to judge beforehand, we can't.
Yes, I would say they would have to do it, right.
Yeah, but.
But that's another question too, it's just like, what is this judging period and who's gonna judge and like, are we gonna do like an announcement at, at lunch, probably, I would assume?
That's what I was thinking.
We can all just kind of get together and look at the pictures and see.
I'm wondering whether we have like a, you know, who's like a little sign up for who's trying for whatever, I, you know, I'm not sure. Or do we, no, no, I think we should.
Because you never know what someone's gonna find, yeah, let everyone. But then that's, and we had this, what did we do last year? Because we don't, I don't have a work cellphone, this is like the best opportunity for me to, they called you, are you still okay with being that person?
They could text me a picture, they text me where the trash is located.
Right.
Or they call me.
Because that was the big thing last year, yeah.
Then if they win, you could just text them back saying you won, are you here? Or would you like to pick it up at the town hall, or would you just mail it to you?
Yeah.
And they can decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, like and send them that address then.
And we just make sure to ask people put like, you know, at least their first name, right, so that we know who, who it is.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, if you're okay with being the phone person, then we'll just do it at lunch, we'll, we'll have like while everyone's eating, we'll announce it and, you know. So, so best, best cleanup outfit, what were some of the other?
The most trash collected.
The best before and after.
I like that.
Oh, that's good too.
Because all of this is gonna, we can like have them kind of consent to doing the photo release, you know, this is all great for us.
One of the things that we need.
Right.
Because then we can show like, look at this nasty place with all this trash.
And here it is, I love that, that's a great idea.
Press releases and for just our own, we can share that, those kind of things on social, like, that's what I would do on social media, the mayor's page, right, do some before and afters, thank everyone, you know. Okay, so we got best cleanup outfit, best before and after.
Is his name Jim Brisbane? Just going crazy, the pathogen, James, does that sound?
Doesn't it sound familiar, but I don't.
I don't get a hold of him, I know him.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, definitely get him. I think, I do think that most volume is a lot, but best before and afters kind of like gets at that, right, like, maybe they manipulate it to show an angle that looks like it's more, but, you know, we're not gonna measure the trash.
Send us the number of bags.
Fills up the bags quickly, but if you have to pick up a lot of little things that are.
Yeah, that is true.
Right, or if you have just like a tricycles, a pile of tricycles.
Well, that's sort of like that, that base in there where the, the team unity found a, found the mother, mother lode, they found an illegal junkyard off of. It's in the other one, yeah, but you know, so that's just luck.
That other day when we were behind like, Job Lot back there, it was, there was some camp that we went to that was like, we just like, it was towards the end of the.
I know, we were breaking down homeless camps.
There was so much stuff there.
Which one was this, was the homeless camp?
That was behind.
It was the Red Mountain Trail.
Cherry Street or a different one?
Red, Red Mountain Trail.
All right. It wasn't Earth Day cleanup, it was that other.
It was the, it was the fall cleanup.
But was it with you? And we were going along and then we came up on this huge place where people could.
Well, that's definitely, there's definitely huge.
That was probably with Torrington Trails, cause I was doing.
Okay.
I was doing all of the fast food stuff.
I mean, there was this one spot that was at least the size of this room. Were you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was like Goodman Street. Like, yeah, I, I know your.
Clean up, cause it was like, it was towards the end and it was like, oh my God, you need a dumpster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so best cleanup outfit, best before and after, and then what? One more or two more? Something most unique. It'd be kind of cool to have like a, like an interesting.
And the best find, yeah, best find.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Most interesting piece of trash.
And then what? One more? Or do you think that's good?
Well, I think we have to see what we get for, for donations.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we can have multiple gift cards and a prize.
True. And it could be brought up and whatever if we need to, if we need to add, you know.
That's true. Maybe three is fine, right?
Each of the, we have nine gift cards. Each of the three is kind of first, second, third place.
Yeah, depending on how many gift cards we get, we can, we can, we can kind of throttle it.
Actually, wow, first place. Wouldn't want each person to get a twenty-five.
Well, right, but we think, we can figure it out based on if we have to do a first and second and not a third, right? We could like, you know, run it up.
Fifty dollars worth.
Exactly. But I think we will get a lot of gift cards, but we'll, we'll figure out if we need, cause I might need to cash one of those in for like bags or something. Um, so we'll see where we're at with that.
Tom, is he still?
Tom Candifer?
Yeah.
Torrington Trails. He's on Torrington Trails and he's on something else.
He usually shows up and is, and does like an incredible amount of stuff. Yeah. Um.
Yeah, he doesn't stop. Wow.
Yeah, and then there was. Rana, what the heck was her name? McCauley? I, I can't remember. But she, that was in two, twenty eighteen maybe or twenty nineteen where she. But didn't like that there was all this trash at the mural on the river, um. Uh, at the Torrington Plaza, you know, the fish mural. There's tons of trash. And so she, she, uh, talked to the mayor and got the go ahead to do an everyday Earth Day and got all her friends together. Clean that up. She was, yeah, we didn't have, we ran out of room.
You have to talk to the mayor to pick up trash or did she want to?
She wanted to have an event and she wanted permission. What she got, yeah.
Um, so that's great. I think that, that, that's all, that takes care of the prizes and I think that'll be fun and not too big of a, a left. And we can hopefully keep on doing it even though it's, you know.
Yeah.
So we should try to do this, let's say maybe within a week and then.
I would say in the next two weeks and then we know what we have. I asked if people wanted to donate, uh, I asked them to tell us by the eleven.
Does anyone need another? Cause Christine can make me another copy or a different.
I was thinking I could just run upstairs and print some.
Okay, well then.
Before everybody leaves.
I mean, I'll hold on to this, I guess, then, um.
Can you guys all stay for five minutes so I can put more of those out?
Sending out letters, but what if we had gone to them in the meantime?
No, cause it's a letter soliciting the team as well.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's problematic. I mean, it's a form letter.
Okay, so, uh, I had some other things on my list, um.
But in two thousand five, you know, like we said, you got eleven hundred volunteers?
No, no, since, since.
Oh, since, oh.
Yeah, from, for the next twenty years, we got eleven hundred volunteers.
That would be difficult to manage. Copark would look insane. I mean, they did have a lot more people back then.
The best year I think was either twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, where we had a hundred and thirty.
Oh, best I've seen has been like fifty maybe.
Yeah, and that, well, that's what it was. It was like, started at twenty and it kind of worked up to forty, fifty. Then right before, uh, the big year, it was seventy-five. And then after that, it was like a hundred, hundred, hundred. And then it just like, I don't know, it kind of dropped to, to nothing in maybe twenty sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah. Takes a lot of work. There's a lot of like networks you have to be like, know everyone in the schools and know all the businesses that are gonna actually do in all the individuals.
I mean, it was, there, there were big teams, like, so Ryan Bingham was into it.
Yeah.
He was, he had a, you know, the mayor's office team and, you know, he, he came out and then the, the chamber had like a young professionals group. That came out. There was the mayor's. Something on youth. That was a group that came out and, um.
And maybe that's the group the mayor was talking about actually, now that I'm thinking about it.
Maybe.
I could, if another point of the chamber, did you reach out to the chamber? Cause Ted Schaefer who came in the other day.
I believe that the Chamber of County.
They're in there? Okay. Well, that's, he may wanna do that.
These don't hurt when you go to see a, uh, photo store and to show them, you know, what you're doing. You know, this is what we do, you know?
Right.
I mean, this.
They're, they're probably not gonna.
I wanted to put that in because how the heck would anybody know if you've never done it before?
Right.
I just thought it might make it like it's.
And we did, we did clean that shopping center. That shopping center would have met them.
Yes, we sure did. And we have for years. I mean, that was the first place I used to do. It was behind Chamber.
There's always stuff there.
So, oh, and I have it going out to all the coaches, um, for Oliver Woolcott and all the, and the public schools and the principals. I got, and the science teachers. So, hopefully, and I'll just make sure. Northwest Community Foundation. Pal, Pal always had a big thing. Torrington Historical Society used to be part of it, so I'm sending something to them. The Boy Scouts.
It's called Preservation Torrington about it.
Is Rosemary on that? Is she, is she the new?
Yeah.
She was telling me about it. Yeah, she said that she's gonna come. We'll see. About that. Rotary Club, Unico, they, Unico, they always come. But I went and found all the other ones. Lions Club's next on this.
Did the Oaks ever send anyone?
No, I don't think so, but we could send to them. But yeah, I'm pretty sure that I have Chamber.
Oaks are right there, so.
Yeah, we should, we should send to the Oaks. Okay.
The other things I had on my list were the trash location inventory. So we were kind of, a big thing that Christine did last year was to go and like look at all the spots. Cause we, we have all these like little cutout maps that we give people so that they know where they have to go. Like this is behind BJ's. This is that weird intersection on Cherry and, you know, at the end of Cherry Street, you know? And so you and your daughter went out and looked at all the locations and raided them. So that we could, we could send people to act. Because prior to that, we were, well.
Going blind.
We were just like, oh, you live near here? Go to this one. There might not be anything there. And they, at least we can like have more impact with less people. And it totally paid off last year because we got, we filled the dumpster way better than, than the prior year.
Like hotspots.
Yeah.
We found the hotspots. So she and I are gonna.
You're, you're gonna take care of that or?
But I might, I might, I mean, if you wanna go out and do something, we'll.
Do what you, do what you do and then give me the leftovers. I'll do that.
Okay.
Um.
Cause our, we are scheduled to do that, not, not this upcoming Saturday, but the one after that.
I may check in on this. Another item, the, uh, Winstead Conservation Commission was like, oh, why are you buying bags? That's so not eco-friendly. You should be going to a brewery and getting their brewery bags. Cause where they get all their hops in, there's these giant plastic bags and they just throw them all away afterwards and they just give them away. So I guess Winstead goes to Little Red Barn.
Oh.
And the Little Red Barn just gives them, I was like, does that dog even brew there?
They do brew. I, I don't know if they still, they, they have some horrible beer, but.
That, that's their reputation. It's not a good.
Similar to like.
They're fantastic. It sounds like.
I think I get the impression it's like a pellet stove pellet bag. But, but they might be bigger than that, cause they're in duck, they're like, for brewing. Like it's like a, they're like grain bags. I don't know.
Pellet stove bags, you're gonna fill up in no time.
And you can't seal them.
Yeah, you leave room to tie it. You're gonna get like this much in the bag.
Well, maybe I'll ask, maybe I'll, I'll see if our connection there can like get a sample.
Use your own judgment, but you know.
Yeah, I could always, I could always ask. Um, we don't have the best relationship with that dog at our office, but, um. But maybe we could, uh, I don't know. I don't know if, if, uh, Little Red Barn, maybe they have so much. Um, but anyway, I, I, I think we're fine on bags. I just wanted to bring up the concept. Um, I think it's cool, but if it.
I'm, I do the same, like, I, cause I have a pellet stove and I can't stand all these plastic bags, but then I try to use them and it's, and they're.
Yeah, I've used them for garbages, but they fill up quick. I mean, um, well, just if you have a, maybe just on the back burner and if you happen to be in one of those places or. Um.
Anyone wanna stuff these longer? After you do and stuff.
As well, right? Um, and then food, we're on that with food. We have. We always get a donation from Dunkin' Donuts. They give coffee. I asked Ashley, she always coordinates that in our office, um.
You have like that.
Yeah.
Sealer. Yeah, we have an auto sealer. Um. I asked for one urn, you know, with the big, the, the reusable urns of coffee, one urn of coffee and one, um. A box of Joe of Hot Cocoa. Cause we never run through, we're always dumping tons and tons of coffee at the end of the event. Does that seem reasonable? I think.
Yeah, I like that Hot Cocoa, I do.
You know?
Yeah, I could, yeah.
We usually do, we usually do Hot Cocoa, but no one ever drinks it and that's, yeah.
Oh, so you're saying not through the hot.
Well, I think just do one box of Joe of it.
Box of Joe Hot Cocoa, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how many cups are in a box of Joe.
I don't know, but you know, the cups that they give you are empty.
Right. Right. Alright, well then that's, that's taken care of. And then we, I think I was saying before, we got the NIPS money, um, from the state now.
Although we have the college students coming, we have the, they're not gonna drink coffee. They're gonna drink the sweet stuff.
Yeah. We can get, we can get two. I'm not, I have.
I mean, usually they give us two.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking if you have a bunch of college kids, they're gonna suck down that sugar like nobody's.
You don't think they'll drink the coffee? I drink a lot of coffee.
How many NIPS were there?
What, for the, for, for a, a re.
Totally wrong.
Well, let me just, I'll put it on. I can always, you know, they don't care. They'll give us.
The kids, like, you know, I don't know. We haven't had, we haven't had like older kids.
I'm gonna do two times Hot Cocoa, but I, the urn is plenty.
Yeah, the urn is plenty.
Um, I don't know what the total, that would be a question for Linda. I don't know what the total NIPS.
What are we using the money towards?
The lunch.
Yep. I've been buying lunch for the past number of years.
Yeah, so we're gonna actually go, with that's the NIPS money is for trash cleanup projects, right? So it was, it, so we got approval from Public Works.
That's the thing that's really not fun to solicit for.
Oh, I had to do that one year. Horrible. No one wants to give either. So it's like, you know, it, it's tough. Um. But this year, so we're working on that though. Well, we'll be fine on that. Um, and then the last thing I had was truck. You think Steve is down to, uh, to be the truck guy again? I, I.
It's always better when we have a truck guy that day as opposed to Public Works on Monday.
I think Steve's on lines. I'll talk to him about it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask him to, but, um, yeah, just put it in his ear. I know he's been getting all of the, he knows when it is. Um. And, uh.
It's running from there. He's not, he's not.
He, he submit, he, uh, I know that he, he submitted his paperwork I heard today, so.
Yeah.
Well, he's running the pad.
He's having, um. We're having an open, an open house at, at the brewery.
Oh, what is that? Oh my God.
It's, um, let's see.
No, nothing against, um.
Well, I don't know who is gonna be replaced. I don't know who the Republican candidate can be.
This is her last.
Yeah, it's her last year.
Well, that wasn't, do you know that for sure?
I don't know for sure, but I think, yeah.
I heard that Molly wants to run.
Molly Vino?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes.
It's a public company.
So, um.
Alright, so when is that?
Yes.
When is that in George?
Look at that.
Um.
What else was on your list, Nate? Did we get through it?
No, we got through it. So.
So our next thing is, um, the Jigs Donahue Food Forest Planning.
Um. Yes. You know, this is big. So, so to end on the Earth Day, we don't have a meeting between now and then. So we'll do the, the gift cards are the big, the big ask.
Right.
These are all go in the mail.
That would be.
Arrive at what time?
So maybe we need more than.
Um.
If anybody had extra envelopes.
I know officially it's nine, but.
I, what time do you think people should arrive at? Eight? That's too early. I mean, I'm gonna be there.
I usually, I try to get there at eight.
I try to get there at eight.
Early, eight fifteen is.
Right. Anytime between eight and nine, if I think of other people, get, you guys get there.
Start showing one up at nine and it's, it's a big rush. So if we got like bags ready to hand out.
Yeah.
That's kind of the big task.
We need two thousand dollars. I've already changed seven thousand dollars.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, your taxes are gonna go up tremendous because I heard that military is gonna be somewhere around thirty, but you got, did you get your new appraisal on your house?
Hey, George.
I'm sure you did.
Let's, let's stay on, on track. No problem. So.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to show you that it's.
What day of the week is that?
Okay.
Let's take a quick picture. Okay.
No, I didn't mean to say that.
Alright, there we go.
Taxes are gonna go down.
Well, we, we don't, you have no idea how much though. Okay, so anyhow. Uh. Yeah, so everybody knows, who, who's planning to come? I'm gonna be there.
I'll be there.
Birthday. You gonna be there?
For IT, yeah. The only thing is my son has jiu-jitsu in the morning. Nine, you know, nine thirty to ten thirty. I come, what time's it go till?
Well, goes till noon.
It's very quiet between ten and noon.
But if you come for lunch, you can help us with like breaking down, cause we have to set up like the civic center for lunch. So if you came for lunch, a little before lunch, that'd be, that'd be helpful, I think.
Or is, is he, you drop him off like downtown?
I bring him home and then. And.
Well, what I mean is when you drop him off to jiu-jitsu.
Yeah.
Where is that? Is it close by?
Decently close, yeah. It's in the plaza.
Okay, because, because stuff is still going on at nine thirty.
No, no, I have to, yeah, but I have to pick him up at ten thirty.
By ten thirty, things are clear now.
It's true. We actually need the most help. Well, well, you, but you have to drop him off at nine thirty. So that's kind of.
I have to drop him over at nine thirty, come to pick him up and then I had, and, I'm sorry, come, come to Earth Day.
Yeah.
But then I have to leave to go pick him up and like.
I would say, I would say coming in the afternoon, like if you came for lunch, if you can, is that too much of a pain? Cause then you're going back and forth and back to pick.
Come up at ten thirty. I bring him home and I'd be back by, I could be at Earth Day about eleven.
And that would be fine for lunch and then you could have lunch and help with breaking down or doing the prizes or all that kind of stuff. Um. The bulk of the work is in the morning when everyone is like showing up and, but I think if we have a lot of people, we're gonna need more people in the afternoon too. Because we'll have all the food and, and bring everything down, judging. They show up at nine.
Yeah, they show up at nine to get their, their stuff.
Yeah.
What time should we arrive?
Between eight and nine, depending on how, like eight thirty is fine.
Eight thirty, yeah. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come at nine. Come, you, you won't get parking.
That's a good point.
Come, come earlier.
You know, you know what I would say?
Park over on Cook Street.
Park on Cook Street. You know where the new health, um, Hartford, is it Hartford Healthcare? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Where the bank used to be? Uh, you know what I'm talking about? Um.
I know there was a bank across the street that's gone. I don't go downtown.
It's basically, it's a narrow grass lot that has, um, chain link fence on either side, correct? chain link fence on either side, correct? And then that's where the, that's where the, you'll see the dumpster. That's like the access to the dumpster. So if you park in the dumpster access area.
But there's a whole big parking lot for the bank back there. It's next to Pack Group. You'll see the Pack Group.
Doyle's too, if you know.
Yes, across Doyle's.
And there's a long.
If you're at the Plaza and you're going away from Copark to, like to the south, right on the right, past Copark, first right. And, and it's back behind there. But you can call us if you have.
And even though with grass, you can.
No, well, there's a, there's a parking lot.
Oh, so you don't have to.
I wouldn't say park in the grass. I think it's fine if you park in the.
You pass Copark on which side?
Here.
On the right side is the best.
You're gonna share it some.
The bank's the right ethical.
Dan, do you know what we're talking about by parking in the back there? Oh, are you gonna be there, Dan? On the nineteenth?
If you're talking, we don't hear you.
Oh, you're saying to park in the bank? Parking lot?
Yeah.
Oh.
So we can't hear you.
Healthcare. We can park in that.
Try again.
Try talking again, Dan.
I think good. There's, there's a, the dirt section too. In other words.
Are you coming or not coming?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe. Okay.
Um.
So I mean, it'd be, it'd be, like, oh, yeah.
Here. Just, uh, I was just gonna share this. Well, no, uh, oh.
There was two speaker options.
I was, I was toggling back and forth between them. Um, or. I don't know.
Weird.
Um, hopefully it's record, well, he's, sorry, Dan. Um, here, let's see. So I'm, I get my notes all over the place.
In the recording, like them.
Probably will.
Yeah.
So this is, this is Copark, this is the civic center, right? A lot of people, this is where everyone's gonna park.
Parking lot.
Right. Cook Street, so Doyle's is here, the Armory is here, Fusenich is here, right? And across is Cook Street. There's this first kind of right-hand turn in here. This is now, uh, what did I say? Hartford Healthcare or something?
Urgent, some kind of urgent.
There's parking behind here. You can just walk in. This is technically owned by the city. You could probably park along this, but since the parking exists here, probably. I mean, it's only gonna be for us. We're not directing anyone other than us to park there. So I don't think, if we were directing like all the volunteers to park there, I would, or all the, like, yeah, pickup people, I would.
There's no fence?
This, that's Pack Group.
There's no fencing?
There, there is fencing, but you can walk over. The gate is here.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
You know? Yeah, there's like a gate in here and then the dumpster goes right here.
Okay.
But this is the, it's all different. They restriked it. I think there's more parking now. But anyway, regardless, park right along here. Um, yeah. Um, but yeah, so that's that. So, so I'll let everyone know if there's anything else comes up, but if not, we'll see everyone.
Yeah, so email us what you get for gift cards. And then show up. Yeah, I guess just bring them or, you know.
Yeah, since we're not putting them eggs in advance.
Right.
You can just bring them and we can.
We can deal with that.
Do we have any, we can do basket. I think, I think giving you a big egg is fine. I think that's.
I, I, I got.
You said you already bought the egg?
Oh, yeah.
Putting a gift card in an egg is.
I think that's cool. Yeah, just feel like they get the element of surprise. Maybe they can. Yeah, let's see, maybe they could pick from the egg basket, but then.
Well, then we would have to, we'd have to have a certain tiers.
Right.
We do the tiers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay.
We can brain, we can think about that and.
We got them, we got them a month or less, a little less. Okay, so our next order of business then goes to jig. And these are the two big ones. We may table other stuff because it's not as important. We just need to get this planning done. The Jigs Donahue Food Forest planning.
That's scheduled for May tenth. That's when we agreed that that would be. So it's the day before Mother's Day, Saturday. We're really doing the day before the holidays. But this worked with all the partners. Um, I'll, uh, I'll continue to share the screen. Um, so. So, oh gosh, no, 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 no. Ashing the GIS. That's why I'm kinda. I don't want top lines. Oh, well.
That name, my uncle. You know, that's the way in his, like eighties. His parents called him Jigs, let's be honest.
Oh, really?
I wonder if this Jigs is like.
He was a baseball player.
Was he?
That's what he was. Like, I was like, who the heck is Jigs? I don't think local either. He's, he's just a famous baseball player.
People just.
You know?
Jigs down in. It was parked his name down.
After this baseball player. So maybe, maybe he was, uh, good at baseball.
Yeah. So it's this, right? So, so this is East Pearl Street. So this is the intersection with the bakery.
Yes, the little church. So where's the little building?
The little church is this building. It's behind, it's like a weird little thing. Well, so this is the, the kinda logistical aspect of it. There's parking all down here, but it's really tight and it's difficult to manage. We're gonna be planting up here next to this, um, community garden. And I checked with Torrenton Area Health Department, that's here. We're gonna direct everyone to this parking lot. They don't have any event going on or anything and they said it was fine. Torrenton Area Health. So we're gonna have people park there and then there's a little path that goes right there. And if people are, have, you know, handicap issues and they want something at grade, they can, well, this is, this has a little slope to it. They can always access, we can send those people to this part of the park. And there's a gate here and they could even wheel all the way over to it. Um, so we haven't done any like flyers or anything. We're still trying to figure out the event with the partners. So the three partners that we've identified on this are, um, uh, the community garden people, and that's kind of a partnership with, is, Ed Advance is involved in that somehow, but just kind of like local people, master gardeners. And they grow food here and then they donate it to Friendly Hands. Um, so this is great because we could have the fruit harvest, you know, instead of having to have this community pick events, we could coordinate it with them and try to, you know, they already have infrastructure, they have people looking out for the site, making sure there was vandalizing stuff.
So we're still hoping that the neighborhood people pick the fruits.
They can. They, they wouldn't be disallowed, but anything.
But what if they start picking the other? Like, you know what I mean? Would they be confused?
I don't know.
Like, if they're growing that for, um, helping hands, you know what I'm saying?
They didn't seem, they didn't seem concerned with that. The woman who coordinates that project, um, it's mostly greens because it's, the light is such an issue there. So I don't think they have stuff that's super tra, like, you know, a bunch of greens growing. People aren't, it's not like a big tomato or like, you know, it's, it, it, right. So we would go, we would put our setup right here. So we're on, they're totally on board with us. They wanna help. They, they already have water on the site. The fire department fills up in a giant like tank there. They'll, they would, oh, we can get mulch together. They even have like amendments, like manure and stuff like that. Um, she was super jazzed on just being involved and, you know, it's like a community partner, like she, like she knows the rhythms of the park.
Loves her, unlike us.
Yeah, they do.
She's like, oh, you know, Public Works does it for me. And we're like, oh, okay. So you are now the liaison.
I think Public Works spread their mulch for them.
Right, like they do all kinds of stuff for them.
I mean, we don't need that, but, uh, but anyway, so we would be sticking it right here in this little, you know, this little sliver, right, south facing. And you just wanna be kinda right there. Um, we modified the planting plan to have more shade tolerant. So we were gonna do pawpaws up on the north side so that they're not shading anything out. And then the blueberries and currants to the south of it in, in little rows essentially. And that would be, and we can always in the future add on to that, do something different. But for now, we would do that and mulch a square around it so that they can mow easily.
Plants that we were babysitting and they're still alive somewhere?
The apples, I don't know what's gonna happen to the apples. We, I guess we can. At some point, um, but they're gonna split the pawpaws.
But I do want to use those now.
It only gets like five hours of sun max and so it.
Are they inside? You got them inside?
No, they're, they're, they're healed in. Well, they grow out of the pot, right, before they start to like.
Wait, the apples?
Until the fall and all year.
Yeah, we, we could, we could, uh, well, and we don't know where we'd put them, right? We don't really have a spot for them unless you wanna put that your business spot.
Yeah, I could do, I could do my little, my little food forest on Prospect Street. Um, but.
For now.
I'm up for a gorilla apple tree planting.
They cut down your apple tree on Winthrop Street.
They did?
Yeah, check it out.
Oh, man.
It was, it was DOT. It was the highway.
Was it?
Yeah. Um, but so, so anyways, we have, so we have a good plan, kinda scoped here. Um, the event, I still have to talk to the representative from Ed Advance, cause basically like last time with Bannon Street, we like did the mailer and tried to get the community, but like, of course, like very few people respond if any, but.
There was a ton.
There was like a hundred or so, at least a hundred fifty. Um, and we, you know, we got a smattering of people saying, cool.
How fun, yeah.
But that's, that's about it. And, you know, people did, were aware of it. I mean, for better or for worse, um, by the end of it. Um, but in this case.
Participation.
Right. So in this case, we were thinking more, maybe I would send something out to like the immediate abutters, um, just kinda telling them what's gonna go on there and then rely on Ed Advance to coordinate all the outreach. And they're basically gonna bring kids from across the city and their parents. And they were like, oh, we'll bring a food truck. They seemed like they were gonna coordinate a, a large portion of it there. So I figured, you know, if they're gonna bring people in and, you know, we should just rely on them rather than trying to kinda drum up our own business.
Not a lot. I, I mean, there's no res, much residential. They've got larking and, and you've got.
Yeah, the people just across.
Right. There's quite a few three, two and three families here. So I would think I'd probably send something to like this corner. And then these are all, yeah, it's commercial. Um, but, you know, even then, you know, just so that they're aware of it and it's, you know, and if they wanna contact us. But just to go through the effort of like what we did last time, I just, I don't, I don't have the bandwidth to do that. Um.
You have the okay for the department of Public Works guy already?
So, well, so we have, we had minutes with an approval from the Park and Rec Commission that I have like framed in my office. And now it's like, you know, we have permission. Although not that that would ever, I feel like, you know, who knows, right? But, um, I, I have a meeting scheduled with Public Works with the guys who I had scheduled last time that said it was okay, but just to make sure that they're okay. There is some like sewer infrastructure that comes into here. So I would just, I have a feeling it's gonna have a little bit to do with that, but mostly with like mowing and maintenance and, you know. Yeah, I don't think, I mean, it wasn't an issue here. It's like, this is the, like clean out or whatever. It's right here, like a foot away from that garden. So, um, anyway, yeah.
Sorry, you already said this for soil, what we're doing?
So we, we looked at, from a, from a high level, Annette with the Conservation District was like, wanted to make sure it wasn't contaminated. Um, yeah.
That or.
We're planting into the ground.
We are planting into that. It's a, you know, I don't know if we're gonna need a amendment.
Testing done.
She did. She, she had the soil testing? Yeah, right.
Did the soil testing and they tested for heavy metals.
They did.
Berries and current blasting and just quality of oil for.
Right. And part of that is, we may need to have amendment in there.
Yeah.
Right. And I think we can, the Conservation District seems like they're
Yep.
Ready to help with the, like the actual logistics of the planting as far as soil and, you know. Um, like I said, we had, we're gonna coordinate with wood chips for mulching with, with the community garden. And we were gonna try to do a little bit of. Right, with cardboard. See if we can go to like, uh, like Torrenton Window and Sash and get one of their big windows, like cardboard boxes and try to load those up and use that to sort of put a barrier down before we mulch over that. Um, I don't know if they use die mulch. They're, they're relying on donations. Um, I wouldn't think that, well, this looks pretty dark.
Was it?
Uh, well, I don't know. I, I, she seemed to be concerned about that kinda stuff, so, um, but I don't know. I don't, I don't know it. We can check. I'll definitely make sure to check. And I mean, if we have to, I think Annette had her own mulch connections, like Supreme was willing to donate some mulch, I think, where they were, they donated to other projects. So I think we have an option, but that's true. We do have to make sure we coordinate on all that stuff to make sure we have it. Cause we'd want the volunteers to be like planting. We may have to dig pilot holes if it is really, really bad. Um, and again, the Conservation District offered, offered to do that, but we may have people mulching and putting down cardboard and all that kinda stuff as well. Um, the event itself, we wanted to have it be something where we have people planting and doing our mulching and all that kinda stuff. The Conservation District wanted to do like an educational, cause the river's right here, the North Tuck River's right here. And there's a little access way in there that's like a nice view of the river. They wanted to maybe like something with kids, like just a little educational bit on river ecology, flood plain, just the context of where they're at.
Then there's gonna be like a, a table, like Sophie, there's too many people or pandemonium ensues. It can hurt some kids over to the, uh, to a table where they have to a planting for Mother's Day. So like cow pots and, you know, the seeds and they, somebody's there doing a planting table with them.
And that seemed like the, the, you know, we could either help staff that or the district could have someone there as well. But that's basically it. And then they would put. Yeah, they're gonna, I think that they're gonna do all that stuff. Um, I'm gonna coordinate. I told Annette to come up with like a planting plan, like kind of like a, like a materials list and logistics on all that. So I decided to follow up with her on that. But I assume they would have the food truck down here too. All of the, I guess the way that it works with Ed Advance, all the families that come would get free, a free voucher for a meal at the food truck. We would have to, everyone else would have to pack. It would be there.
That facing south, right?
This is south. Yeah. And is, is there bathrooms on the site?
Not that I know.
Porter potties there?
No.
I'm gonna ask. Maybe, maybe we can ask Public Works. Or maybe we can have what's her name be asked.
Yeah, that's what you want to have asked. We need Mary to ask.
Um, alright. Um, let's see. The question, do we wanna promote this outside? So like, I, I talked about Ed Advance and all that. How much wider, more widely do we wanna promote?
I say that.
Cause we were, okay, we were worried about like the, the vinyl signs we put out, cause they're not like, we don't, we'd have to get new ones ordered and all this stuff. Um, I did soon send it to the local neighbors and have Ed Advance do it. And if other people show up, would we do a press release?
I know. So my, my issue is, is being on a negative radar for Park and Rec again.
What, trying to, trying to balance between letting them see what we're, what we're doing, but not getting too big?
Permission, but nah, nah, I, I mean, I just don't understand what the heck happens, you know? I mean, I kinda get what happened.
Right.
But, you know, clearly seeing something, um, on the mayor's Facebook page is what triggered the, triggered the whole.
Right, right. But honestly, it almost, I mean, it was probably a good thing because if they found out that they were in the ground, they may have made us rip them out.
Yeah.
Could have been even more.
Something and now we're gonna be taking over.
I did ask. So I, so, so the Park and Rec Commission said, oh, no one uses that. And they, they sent us here for that reason. I talked to Ma- Mary, that's her name. She, she, and she's there all the time. And she says no one really, like people bring their dogs there, but it's not really. Right, basketball. But there's an old baseball backstop here, but there's no, not even any like soccer activity on that field there, which would have been my thought was maybe this is the soccer pitch. But she said she doesn't observe any of that. So I would trust, she's been there for six years. That, you know, if we set up shop there, right? Um, we are gonna probably, did we decide if we're gonna fence it or not?
I thought that we were definitely gonna fence it.
At least to keep dogs and kind of.
Basketball.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna have fence.
A low fence, like a, you know, four foot.
From the fence and.
So they can mow it. Yeah.
Big, big.
Because that's another good thing with Mary. So good that they're here, cause they've been in this exact spot. They know what Public Works wants. They know how to make it so that they're, they're happy. They know what, like, you know, the, the biggest danger is the dogs. And they don't fence theirs at all though. Um, and they seem to be okay. I think they asked if we could.
They want pee fence.
They want, they want trellis.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but, uh, but yeah, so I think that's pretty much, oh, one of the, were we gonna try to get free raspberries again? Was that, or blackberries? Did you?
I can ask. I mean, I know she, she decimated this huge, um, patch that she had for, you know, she just like replanted her things, but I can, I can find out.
I don't know. I mean, it was something.
She, she loved that, she loved that tax.
Right off.
Right off.
Yeah.
She was psyched. So I'll ask her.
Say if not, we don't need it, but, um, but yeah, that's.
Raspberries though, if someone's not, and carry them, will they kinda like take over and stuff?
This is a giveaway.
Oh.
Oh, to give to people who show, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what, that's what we did at Bannon Street. And some people actually took them and banned some of their, you know, they, there is some fruit on Bannon Street now, um, maybe, but, uh.
Yeah, one of the, the guy who was into the, the food forest took it to plant his own food forest right at.
At the, along the road. So who, who says we didn't do anything? Um, but yeah, that's all I had it. Cause right now we have, we have one more meeting before this. We have the April meeting. Um, that'll be like right before the, or, yeah, April meeting. So I can kinda work to get the, well, see, do we want a flyer? I mean, do we, we wanna?
Well, what do you guys think?
Or Ed, Ed Advance might do a flyer.
That Ed Advance should just, Ed Advance should do it. And does it get posted? I mean, I'm like so scared to, to, you know, just get too enthusiastic about this whole thing. Which is why I think if Ed Advance is doing it, we just make sure that we have, that we actually do have some kinda paperwork for the project from Park and Rec.
Should I mail something to the adjacent neighbors? And should it include the businesses?
How are people even gonna know that they can go there and pick these?
It's a good point. But we would wanna have a sign at least eventually. I don't know if we would do that in this round, but we probably should.
I mean, I think. It's, I lost my word. It's, it's a nice thing to do to, uh, to announce it to the. The neighbors who are across the street.
Mailing the neighbors for help to come for planting, then I would mail now, but if it's, it's to let them know that the forest is available, I'd probably.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Maybe we could wait until it's in and then get it, send it, send it, just to be like, hey, this is there now. I mean, the nice thing is that they, like, people kinda know the community garden is there, so if they see this, they might be like, oh, it's an extension of that, which. Kind of is acting as that, so, um, you know, maybe we do hold off on it till summer. I think it is good to like get some kinda sign up there in the summer, even if it's just a laminated, like, hey, this is like. Forest in progress, you know?
You know, did the Conservation District say that they could do signage?
Yeah, uh, well, that was when they had the grant. I don't know, I don't know what their, but they might be able to do some like nicer signage later. Well, and we're gonna have the, it's gonna be fenced in, though. So, but we can, we can tie it right to the fences.
That's what we, maybe we get, can we get like one, um, what are those things made out of? It's that plastic corrugated. We get one plastic corrugated sign maybe from right wing, that says something like food forest in progress that goes on the fence?
Maybe, I just asked them for the banner, so I kinda, yeah, I wanna keep it to one a year.
So I wonder what it would cost to have one of them.
Essentially at the corners and in the middle, and then that, that vinyl coated.
Green fence.
Metal fencing. Just to, just as a physical bit, not even to keep like rodents out or anything, like, we can flare it, I guess, the bottom, but. I wasn't, I wasn't intending on burying it or anything, just to, mostly just like balls and like dogs out of it, um. Uh, but again.
It's gotta have a way for us to get in.
If you guys ever discovered, if you had two-way zip ties, I was like obsessed with those, with these fencing. They make them where there's a little button and you can zip them. And then you hit the button and it like unzips. So I had all kinds of fencing that was just two-way zip ties. But those are easy, cause then you can just like zip tie it together and then just undo them to get in, when you have to get in periodically. But yeah, so, so we have another meeting. I'll kinda get everything to the point where we were at for the last one and then. But yeah, we should be, hopefully, um, you know, Ed Advance kinda takes the lead on the event portion of it and we can.
Do we have a meeting with Lauren? Alright. Lauren's with Ed Advance. But we met with the Conservation District and Mary in the community garden, and, uh, Lauren was away. We need to meet with her. Okay, so do we, we have ten minutes. Do you wanna, um, go over owl boxes?
I can just, yeah, I thank you Karen for getting all that, so I was so bogged down. It, it became the thing that was moving on my list every day. But I did, I did reach out to him, um, he said, we could do it this, we could do it at the end of this year.
So enthusiastic and then, then like, you know, I wanted to make sure.
Right, hurry up and wait and then.
Well, and I didn't call back. I think I did finally call him back and say that I, or I was the middle man and I gave the number to you and you'd be in touch with him, but.
So I, I talked to him, he said all he needs is the, is the plans, and we were gonna just use these plans. Um, this is what Christine had looked up, and it also has like habitat requirements, like some placement location. I thought that was, he needs to have everything we need. I think, yeah, we could at least do one or two at the Red Mountain Trail, which is gonna be opening hopefully in fall. Of this coming construction season, it won't be, but if we have it there, it's gonna get a lot of. It'll be in the woods in a good location for them, but also we'll get some visibility, um, from trail users. Before they install, well, they could build it at any time and we could install it. I mean, it's nice if the kids could get. Could get to install it. I mean, yeah, I could see, it'd be great if we had like a lift or something. But if, I mean, we're gonna have city stuff there anyway, and Public Works could have, uh, like a lift go in there, if we could turn it into like a little pressy event thing. Uh, the mayor probably would like that, um. So, you know, once we do that, but I, I did tell him, I was like, I think my bandwidth is totally strapped for this, the end of this school year. We could do it as soon as we can in fall, fall twenty twenty-five. But what we need to do is we, I haven't said that to him yet. If we're all good with that, I can send that to him, but we need, we need to provide the materials. Material, uh, not the materials, but the, the wood and the hardware, I assume. I would, I would probably start with two, right? It's like one by, is it, is it like one by? Yeah, pine. Cause you don't wanna, like, as untreated as possible. Yeah, so I would think that, I mean, it'd be nice to get something like cedar, but that's probably gonna be more expensive and. It is. Well, and so that's the thing, we either, we probably wanna get a donation, like it'd be nice to go to. No, we're gonna get the, Oliver will get tech kits to make it. The owls. Four foot, but what?
I was just saying, you have a four foot by four foot wood.
So in that plan, it has it laid out for cutting in a, in a, like in a.
Oh, like it is a piece of, like it is a plywood. Well, it's gonna be four foot by four feet. Maybe it's.
Do it as like a birch, maybe a birch veneer plywood or a.
Does that, I mean, if they, if they're saying that that's fine, I mean, I've built bat houses with plywood.
I mean, I don't think you'd have to buy a four by four as long as.
Well, nobody's saying it's, it is plywood. It's not, it's not, it's not one by, it's.
We're thinking that it's like planks, and the plans are saying otherwise.
We could try to find another plan that doesn't use.
Or we could just from this plan, just, it would just be harder to do, but you can, it looks like the widest piece is sixteen inches wide. We need a board that was at least sixteen inches wide.
And my thought too would be like go to Iflin or something and try to ask for a lumber donation. But.
So that would be one. I mean, if that's the case, that's one, um, sheet of plywood for two owl boxes.
Yeah, so it's not that much. It's mostly plywood in that case then, huh? It's like, that's, the sides are all plywood and then. The top is probably, I don't know.
They're, they're having it all be cut out of that one.
Well, the siding could be. Well, it, regardless, they're willing to build it for us, so if we're, I mean, if we're okay with this plan, we could look at different plans. Um, we just have to figure out the material cost, and you're right, we could probably afford to buy it if we.
But also it might not be a big ask.
Or we could save with a Lowe's gift certificate for, how much is a four by four sheet of plywood?
I think it depends on what plywood you buy.
Eight by four? So you would just like rip it in half?
Well, that's what I'm saying, with the eight by four, you get two. They'll do the one free cut.
I told him it was gonna be in the fall, but he said to get it, cause I, I, I really, I was like, I'm not gonna, I think I can get this off the ground by then. Um, but, um, but by fall. So I would, I would shoot to do it first thing in the fall and try to get.
Like have it there in September. When school starts.
But yeah, so that's, that's where that is, so we can kinda like pick it up again in the summer after all the other events and get it done.
That's pretty good timing. Alright, so let's, uh, unless anybody has any more comments or questions, we can table the staff update. Till next month.
Just one quick question, it's yes or no. Is that proposal, is that going, that West Hill Solar?
If, we received a siding council, uh, received an application, so. Uh, it has to go through the process. I don't think that they sched- they scheduled the decision for like September. So there's a lot of.
Siding council for the state approve it?
The siding council, no, so there's two, this is a, the Lover's Lane project they approved. This is a, this is West Hill Road, so it's kinda right on the line of. They, they, they formally applied, so now we can submit comments, and so because we have such a long period of time, I was gonna do it at.
That's more convenient.
Maybe for the May meeting after the May event is over, I can get a, and what I would do is I would draft up comments like I did for the Lover's Lane project. And give them to you guys to review.
Lover's Lane's been approved or is that still?
It has been approved, yes.
So all our property's gonna be solar panels?
Well, it makes sense, right? We have cheap land.
Yeah, you know, yeah, but how much more can we, you know, that, that also takes away from the tax base. I mean, there's a lot of good pros and cons.
So I'm trying to figure that out, because why are they talking about like forty thousand dollars coming in for, because of the properties?
They do pay, they pay personal property taxes. The actual, the actual.
The value of the, of the array.
But I don't think, I don't think it compensates for a build out of single family homes in that site, um, but that comes with its own issues.
The thing I like about it, honestly, is that you have, um, Steve Thompson doing the. The agriculture, the, the grazing on those properties. For active agriculture to produce, produce something.
But you know, that electricity does not goes to the grid. It doesn't come to Torrington, it's, you know, we don't.
We don't get a discount, but it is in our grid. You can't. Electrons go, the electrons.
But who, but, but Hartford does get the discount.
They get it, so that's, so. I believe that Torrington has something like that as well, like City Hall has some kind of, um.
It's in Newtown or something like.
Yeah, so they, they contracted with some other solar company and built an array, and we get a discount for that. So, you know, one of the, when West Hill was presenting to planning and zoning, one of the things that was asked was, you know. Why is this benefiting us? And they were like, no, it's not benefiting you, because whenever we sent out proposals. And they just told the years that they sent the proposals out to do something for the city of Torrington, we ignored it. And then we put out, um, what are they called, RFP? Uh, and this, this particular place doing West Hill missed that RFP. And, and we contracted with a different solar company, but that stuff isn't in Torrington, that's in some other town. But we get a discount on our energy. Torrington's like.
Is it done yet, or I don't know much about that, yeah?
Some of the reason why we have solar farms is because, um, the people who create. Electricity, um, are mandated by law. So much of it, so much of it has to be not from fossil fuels, so they're mandated to have these places.
And it's.
Profit, they, they're doing it because it's mandated.
In our, in our plan of conservation and development, we're seeking, we are seeking more solar development.
I mean, I was seeking more? I mean, we're not actively seeking more, but it, but it's, but the, but the plan.
It approves the solar development.
And well, and a lot of it is just the condition on the ground, right? Like, we don't have local control over siding of solar. Uh, up to what, what is it, like, one point five, three megawatts?
Has to go to the site. It's over one me, the three megawatt, that's West Hill's three megawatts, anything over one megawatt, I think, has to go.
So we have no local control, but we have inexpensive land, we have access to three-phase hookups and, and population, right? So they, it probably added the bullseye on us because we have accessibility, but also cheap land.
Right, but at least, what was that state, that state statute that went through this, said you can't be using, uh, farm land?
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's, there is some prime, like designated prime agricultural soils, I believe.
Right, so the one that went in near Jeremy, that would not have, that was just too late. We were too, that statute was too late for that, but that would not have been allowed.
But then the question is, it's like, well then, you can't do that there, but then they could build anything else there.
Are they gonna be clearing big tracts of forest?
And they are, they do. If you look at the one that they, they did, it's just, it's just. I'm, I'm all for clean energy, you know, and, and I, and I sit on a Sierra Club political committee and I'm all for it. But when you start taking Torrington as an example, and all the little towns around us don't want it, just like they didn't wanna contribute to our little, uh. Uh, dog facility here, or, or anything else, or our fire department, which comes, goes all these calls for them. We, we're, we're the recipients of all the bullshit.
Has always been the recipient of all the bullshit regarding the, the surrounding towns. Because we support them and, I mean, we, we subsidize them in many, many different ways. I mean, that's, that's, that's.
But they can't, they, they have a more difficult time regularly denying the solar, right?
They're disappointed Torrington has to put their foot down.
Well, we can't put our foot down, but, you know, we, we can't put our foot down, um, and our land is cheaper than if somebody wanted to buy. Big tract of land and go, I mean, that's really what the, what the difference is, is that our land is inexpensive. And if it were inexpensive, if it were inexpensive, we, you know, we would be in a gentrification situation. We would be, you know, which we, we might be in with the, with the increase in taxes, anyway. You know, who knows what's gonna happen, but we, we would be displacing, we'd be displacing so many of our, of our citizens' copy of what.
Oh, right, you're gonna get more.
Oh, you want me to make some copies? Alright, so do we wanna move to adjourn? We have a second? Alright, well, favor, I, from Carrie's. Alright, let me make some copies. So how many copies? You need two, or you?
Dan was the silent member. That's okay.